Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I call the August 11th City Council meeting to order. What is that go? As a reminder, we continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings. Both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I welcome you all to join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where riches stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is special business, and ID, first item, ID 1883, is the recognition of Tina Eggers, and I'm going to ask Tina to come up with me so I can embarrass her on camera. [applause] Like all public servants, this is probably the hardest part of the job, is when they finally stand up and say all the wonderful things you've done for 20 years. Tina has served as our city clerk for the city since October 2004, and she started as chief of staff to the mayor in 2021. The past 20 years, she has been a time of much growth and change in the city. Tina has stewarded the city through this period with deep care and commitment. Over Tina's time in Issaquah, she has made immense contributions in the areas of government transparency, improving access to public meetings and information, and supporting the city's many elected and appointed officials sitting up here today and those who have served before. Tina's accomplishments are countless. I'll list just a few. She has facilitated the city's board and commission recruitment process annually over the last 20 years with a commitment to ensuring diverse representation and a fair, consistent process. Tina staffed the city's first salary commission to revisit the compensation of officials and supported the commission again when it was reconvened in 2023. She facilitated the rewriting of the city council rules of procedure, including a transition in legislative structure. I was really grateful for this. This is on my to-do list when I signed up for mayor. I wanted to make sure we got this one done. She has also assisted the city council in filling multiple vacancies. Tina served as the city's public record officer, providing records for major lawsuits faced by the city and responding to public records requests. Tina implemented the city's first digital agenda management system, which the city continues to use today, and she secured a grant to digitize the city's historic council minutes, ordinances, resolutions, and agendas, which are regularly accessed for both internal and external research. As the liaison to King County elections, Tina facilitated multiple election items, most notably the traffic improvement bonds ballot item in 2016 and the plastic bag ban initiative in 2014. Tina has served as the liaison of the Sister Cities Commission, and in this role, she supported the commission in planning many cultural exchanges with artists in Chafchau, Morocco, and Sundal, Norway. Through her work, she's enhanced Issaquah's connection to its global partners and promoted educational opportunities for the community throughout salmon days and school visits. Most recently, Sister Cities International recognized the Issaquah Sister Cities Commission and community members for their 2024 humanitarian relief efforts in support of Chafchau, Morocco, when it was hit by a massive earthquake. Tina was central and key to the planning and execution of the relief efforts. She has spent many long days, nights, and weekends, because I can attest to this, I get calls, used to get calls at very strange times, working tirelessly to support events and meetings, respond to public records requests and discovery requests, to implement augmentation and process improvements, to convene commissions, to assist with initiatives, whatever was needed. Tina never shied away from special projects and the opportunity to make things better. I will tell you, as a mayor who has served with her for eight years, a council member before that, and a board and commission member for 20 years before that, she is just an amazingly organized person. She is a dedicated public servant, yeah, stop, stop, gave every inch that she had to make sure you were as supported as you could be, I was as supported as I could be, and that our community had access to all that we do. So it is with sadness for us and joy for her for her retirement that we say goodbye and present her with this plaque from the city.
Thank you. It's very kind.
I didn't think she was going to cry today, but she did. I knew she was going to cry.
[applause]
Yes, I didn't think I was going to cry today either, and clerks tend to prefer to
This is ID 1820. It's an informational update on economic development, and I'd like to invite Economic
be behind the scenes, and it's been a pleasure, so thank you.
Development Coordinator Jack Pedlow to the lectern.
I have other words of gratitude to provide, but you have an agenda tonight, so I'll
Welcome, Jack. And this is not your first time before council, is it?
It is.
It is? Okay.
help you stay on task, and I will send them in, I'll send some cards of gratitude in
And Madam Mayor, before we hear from Jack, we have a special guest, which I'd like to introduce, and so Alexis, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium.
the next week, so thank you.
Thank you.
I am very pleased to introduce Alexis Fitzsimmons, who is our new economic development and
See you guys later.
planning manager. Alexis will start with us at the middle part of next month, but I asked her to come out to kind of get a running start with us. She is currently the executive director of Grow Licking County, Ohio, which is, Licking County is in the Columbus metropolitan area in Ohio, and she has been there since 2021. Prior to her service in Licking County, she worked for American Municipal Power as their Director of Economic and Business Development, and before that, the city of Middletown, Ohio, as the Assistant Economic Development Director. She brings a wealth of experience, both on the economic development side and the housing side. We're very excited to have Alexis with us, and if you'd like to say a few words, that'd be great.
Thank you. I'm really excited to be here, and I'm excited to start in September. I really appreciate the warm welcome. I've had an opportunity today to tour the city and with Jack as my guide, and I'm really looking forward to getting started in September.
Welcome, Alexis. We did have an informal event earlier, so Alexis could meet some of the community members and the Economic Vitality Commission, so we're glad we're going to be seeing you in September. Back to you, Jack.
Thank you. Thank you so much, and a huge welcome to Alexis. Good evening, council members. It's a pleasure to be in front of you tonight. My name is Jack Pedlow. I'm the Economic Development Coordinator here with the city of Issaquah, coming with an update for activity between May and August of this year. Just a little background on the purpose of this presentation here, it's just an informational update from the period of May 21st, which was my first day until today, and there's no real action needed. This is merely just an informational update. I wanted to start with an overview of Issaquah's economy as it stands right now. On the left, you have a screen grab of our economic data dashboard. This is updated as of July 1st of this year. As you can see on the top there, our unemployment rate currently sits at 3.7%. It is a 0.2% rise from the same unemployment rate in Q2, but we are 0.6% below the Seattle metropolitan statistical area and then 0.7% below the state of Washington. When you look at those two across the same period, the Seattle MSA rose 0.1% over the last quarter, and then the state rose in lockstep with us at 0.2%. So we're trending along the same line as both the state and the MSA on that. Then we have our taxable retail sales for 2024 here. We just got our 2024 year-end data. This data does lag behind by three quarters, so this is the most recent data that we have. As you can see here, it is slightly below 2023, where we're at $2.05 billion, and if you look at the chart and you look at the trends, what you notice is that the highs in 2024, our highest two quarters, were higher in terms of revenue than in 2023, and then our lows were a little bit lower. So very high variance year last year, and we'll be keeping an eye on this data as we go into 2025. Then we go into our commercial rent prices. You'll see that sitting at $32.15. They did rise by almost a dollar per square foot in the last quarter. When you look at that, it's really subdivided across three groups. So we have office, retail, and then industrial. Retail is the most expensive. It's sitting just about $42 per square foot, and that only rose by one cent in the last quarter, so it's relatively steady. We go to office, which is at $36 per square foot, and that went up a whole dollar per square foot over the last quarter. Lastly, we have industrial, which is the cheapest, at $23 per square foot, and that went up three full dollars in the last quarter. A lot of this growth that we're looking at, the 94 cents per square foot, is driven by office, because so much of our current stock is in office, and that's another trend that we'll be keeping an eye on over the next quarter. Lastly here, we have our city commercial vacancy rate, which is sitting at 9.1%, also increased over the last quarter by 0.3%. And when you break that one down across the same categories, you'll notice office is at 17%, which it's been at from about 2023, when a lot of the COVID leases ended, and then we have retail at 2.5% and industrial at 1%. Before I go into some of our current activities, I just wanted to give another brief reminder of our Economic Development Action Plan and the objectives. These really are the three main pillars that we focus through. It's access to opportunity, convene and catalyze, and then leveraging Issaquah's assets. To get started, I really wanted to cover our business visits and familiarization tours. I believe that business visits are some of the most important work that the economic development team is doing. We really want to get in front of businesses and let them know that the city supports them and that we want to see them be successful. Some of the avenues in which we're able to do that is opportunity identification. That's really a cross-team effort. We want to make sure that any teams within the city who are doing good work, we are the window to the business, to make sure that the businesses are aware of that work. Some of the examples we have is the sustainability team has a great sustainable business guide. They've identified different federal rebates that are ending at the end of the year, and they have different ways that businesses can take advantage of different citywide incentives to become a little bit more sustainable. We make sure that when we go to business visits, we're equipped with this knowledge to make sure that companies can be aware of the opportunities. We also certainly a window into permitting and planning. I always ensure companies that if they have any permitting questions, they can reach out directly to us. We might not have the answer for them, but we can put them in contact with someone who will. We want them to make sure that they feel heard by the city and connected. And then lastly, we always love to do some ribbon cuttings. We had two in the last quarter. We were over at the Egg in Us and then Evolve Clinic. It's always great to be able to pull out the big scissors. We've been on over 20 business visits so far this quarter, since May. As you can see here, the map on the right kind of shows where I've been on my business visits. It's going to be a little different than the map in your packet I just updated as of today, so this one here is the most current one. We also really, it's important to us to do familiarization tours, to kind of understand better our assets. As someone who wasn't born and raised in Issaquah, I want to make sure that I can speak on Issaquah's assets with a high level of detail. Some of the ones we've been on so far, Gilman Village, I went with Lena Barrow, the general manager, to make sure I could understand a little bit more of the history of the village, what their vision is going forward, and how the city can support that. I went up to the Issaquah Highlands with Lindsay Pinkston, the Highlands Council President, to understand a bit more about the business climate in the Highlands and what businesses are clamoring for from the city. And then I went to Rowley Properties with Kelly Richardson, the Economic Vitality Commissioner, to understand a bit more about their vacancies, what they're looking at future tenants, and how we can support their current tenants. And then I want to schedule a visit with Visit Issaquah to see Issaquah through a tourist lens. One of our pilot programs this year, Homegrown Retail Program, is designed to provide companies who don't have a brick-and-mortar location a first in-person sales opportunity. The economic development team has provided the tent that you see there, the table, the table covers. We give them all of the materials to go to the farmer's market, and then we pay for their farmer's market fee. This ensures that every single business that's been accepted has a free opportunity at the farmer's market. We give them each two dates. It's split. They get one in May and then one in September. The middle of the market is dedicated for the high produce season, so we've chosen those two. So far through May, we had a sales total of $2,155. We expect that that'll be quite a bit higher in September. A lot of the companies we spoke with so far said that they have some pretty important learnings from the May farmer's market and anticipate having a better sales day in September. There was also a couple rainy days in May that we think may have lowered the crowds a bit, so we're excited to get back at it in September. I got a quote here from Victor. He is with Bell Issaquah. If you've seen their product, they sell merchandise that's Issaquah-themed. He said, "As an online-only business, this was our very first chance to have a physical presence in the community. The Issaquah farmer's market gave us direct access to local residents, and the response was overwhelming." And he also let me know that their day at the Homegrown Retail Program was their highest ever day of sales. So we're very excited to have him back in September and see if he can amass that total once again. We're also one of six member communities in Startup 425. It's a startup support organization with Bothell, Bellevue, Kirkland, Redmond, Renton, and of course us. We host some of our own events, so most of the events you see on the left are hosted by the city. So the Entrepreneur Networking Walks, we do those monthly. We just finished one. That's the photo on the right there from July 23rd's walk. We'll have one on August 21st and September 16th. And then on July 30th, it was the Eastside Summit, so that was all six member communities coming together in Bellevue, and it was a full day of programming around startup support, launching, accessing VC funds, and it was a group of all eastside entrepreneurs who attended that. And then November 4th, we're pretty excited to host a social media marketing workshop. Last year, we hosted a general marketing workshop that was headlined by REI. There was over 80 attendees from the community, and one of the most common pieces of feedback we heard was that while they got really important information, they thought that as a small business, they didn't really have the bandwidth to implement that information. They didn't really have the time for a full marketing campaign. So we're hoping that with social media marketing, it's a little more bite-sized, and that these important takeaways that they're learning, they can go and go to their business and implement a bit of them. We also do receive funding from the Port of Seattle grant, so it has traditionally been a single-year grant. This year, it's covering both 2025 and 2026 due to some turnover at the port. So it is dispersed on a per capita basis. So the city of Issaquah gets $41,500 per year, so we got a total of $83,000 from them, and they have a mandatory 50% match, so we matched that with $41,500 of our own. It's $124,500 in total, and it's split between these three buckets here. Project One is our small business technical assistance. That covers both years of our Startup 425 fees. We then have retention and expansion. We put that toward programs such as CoStar, which is our site search assistance tool, the Homegrown Retail Program, and we can get creative with that over the next years. We look for new initiatives for the economic development team to support. And then the third project is tourism. We're really hoping that with some of our tourism initiatives, that we find one to latch onto and give some funding toward and continue to support through an economic development lens. As you all may know, the team's been through some transition. I think it's important to recognize the state that we're in currently. Going back to March, that's when Juliana left. I then joined May 21st and as the Economic Development Coordinator. A little bit later, Jen left, and her last day was May 29th. In the meantime, Andrea has been the interim Economic Development and Housing Manager. She's been great in helping me understand what the city is looking for out of an economic development coordinator, and then, of course, we're excited to have Alexis joining us on September 16th and finally be a two-person team. And with that, I just want to cover a little bit of what's next. We're going to be continuing these initiatives, always seeing them through the lens of the Economic Development Action Plan and the three main pillars, and then with Alexis's arrival, we'll have the bandwidth to really resume our housing strategy and housing initiatives. And that's it. Any questions?
And you've been with us now how long, Jack?
Just about three months now.
Yeah, that's amazing. Okay. Thank you. That was a great presentation. Councilmember Ray.
I think Jack may have left out one of his most important accomplishments since he did start, and I'd like him to kind of talk about something he did in early July.
Ah, so alongside many other city employees, I worked on the Fourth of July Parade.
Oh.
It couldn't have been done without help from the Parks Department and so many of the public works, public operations employees who helped shut down all the roads and make a safe environment.
A favorite of councilmember Ray's. Any other questions or comments for Jack? Well, Jack and Alexis, I'm glad you are both here this evening, and thank you very much for the afternoon.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
We are going to move from this part of our meeting to audience comments, and this is the time when members of the public can address their council in person or virtually. We will call upon those who signed up in advance to make comments, and I am going to just check in with the city clerk to see if we have anyone who signed up in advance, online, or in the room.
No.
Thank you very much, and...
We do have one virtual attendee with their hand up now, though.
Oh, there we go. Okay, so I'm going to go through some instructions, and I just want to let you all know that this is Deputy City Clerk Cassidy's first meeting, so everybody be... Welcome, Cassidy. We're really glad to have you. So if you're joining us virtually and you would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand or send the host a chat message. Thank you to the person online who did that. If you're on the phone, press star 3. If you joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon, and if you're in the room and did not sign up, I'll ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. And you are invited to address the council regarding matters that are directly related to Issaquah's programs, projects, services, or events. Comments related to political campaigns are not allowed. Please direct comments to the whole council and not individuals, and while this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When you are recognized, unmute your microphone, state your name and address and relationships with the city, and speak clearly and pause frequently. Please limit your comments to five minutes. If you are attending virtually, do not respond after your name or phone number is called or your connection is lost unexpectedly. The meeting will still need to proceed, and we encourage you to rejoin. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Public comments written and verbal are an important aspect of the process, and the city takes comments seriously, and we thank you for taking the time to address us. City clerk, can you please identify the first person online?
Yes, we have a phone caller with the last digits 14. I will make you a panelist, and you should be able to unmute yourself now. I believe if you press star 6, it should unmute you.
Unmute.
This is Steve, who are some of you today?
Yeah, Steve, we can. Thank you for calling in.
Sure. So I'm Steve. I've lived in the Old Town area for about 16 years. Thanks to each of you for your service. I have two themes under the topic of audience comment. The first was, again, the topic name being audience comment, and I just wanted to refer to you some definitions which I found in, just by looking in Google under the terms "audience definition" and "public definition" under "audience." I found the definitions to be "the assembled spectators or listeners at a public event, such as a play, movie, concert, or meeting," and "a formal interview with a person in authority," and third, "archaic use of a human..." That contrasts with the definition "public" of or concerning people as a whole, them perceived or existing in open view. So based on this definition, it seems like the "public" comment is an appropriate phrase to use. I would also point out that in the city council meetings, the term used is "audience comments" that appears, though not aggressive, to be "public comment" in all of the council committee meetings and in ordinance mission meetings. That should be standardized, but again, I would like to see "public" comment rather than "audience comment," because it's more of a, you know, what we're supposed to do as a mock sheet to engage. It also used to be common to use when reading the prefaces, the mayor did, to use the phrase that "public comment" seriously and factor them into our deliberations, but doesn't seem to be included anymore. So that should be standardized to include that. The second piece of this I wanted to address had to do with, in the past couple months, I've heard a person call in. I don't know the person. I don't know the, at least as far as I know, I don't know the person, and I don't know the agenda that they were talking. And he was attempting, I believe it was a heap, was attempting to make some comments, and he was shut down by the mayor and told to go to the King County Council to make comment. It seems like we should never have a situation where a person is told to go to another jurisdiction to report concerns or considerations for public comment, as long as they are doing so with respect and grace and not being alien towards other people. So if the mayor is not willing to support that, then I'd like to ask the city council to revise the "public comment" period to include both "public comment" and to include or allow "public comment" periods on a wider range of topics. That's all I wanted to share this time, other than the written input that I previously provided, and putting thanks to Tina Eggers, in case she's also in the room as well. Thank you in all. Shut up now. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve, and thank you for your written comments earlier this week. City clerk, did you notice if there's any other online participants that might like to make comments?
None at this time, Mayor.
Great. Thanks. So thank you for your comments. The main concerns mentioned were about the descriptive nature of audience comments may not accurately describe the opportunity that exists, and also allowing speakers to speak on a broader range of topics than city of Issaquah programs and policies. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak? Not seeing any. As a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@issaquah.gov, and our next business item this evening is the Consent Calendar. I do not have any remarks on the Consent Calendar. Are there any committee chairs or chair designees who would like to report on any of the Consent Calendar items? I'm seeing head nods, no. The Consent Calendar was distributed to council in advance, and if authorized, the items on the Consent Calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
They have.
Thank you. And does any council member desire to remove any item from the Consent Calendar and consider it under regular business? I'm not seeing any head nods. Would somebody like to make a motion? Council president?
I move we approve the Consent Calendar as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes unanimously, 7-0. The next item of business is regular business, and we're going to move to ID 1903. This is an informational update, a mid-year financial update, and the council's action this evening is just to receive the report. I'd like to invite Finance Director Kristin Garcia to present the item. Kristin, welcome.
There we go. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, members of council. Let's see my screen. Thank you so much. It's very nice to be here. My presentation tonight will review the first quarter results of 2025, and before I go into the presentation, there was a few things that I wanted to accomplish with the presentation tonight. One, I want to learn from you, from questions or comments, things that may be of interest to you, that will help me learn and prepare for future financial reports, because I want to make sure to present information that's of interest and important to you. I also wanted to follow up from the council retreat that was held on July 12th. There were some questions and comments, so I wanted to make sure and follow up with that information. And I also wanted to start expanding the financial reports beyond the general fund. The city has a complexity of different resources and projects, and so I want to start incorporating other elements into the financial reports. The general fund is a major focus, but there's a lot of other information that I think that you should be made aware of, so that'll be coming in future reports. So the presentation will cover results of the general fund. I provided a breakdown of sales tax, BNO tax, and utility taxes, provided some information on REIT, what the revenues are doing there, and some additional information, and then I also wanted to talk a little bit about utility revenues and expenditures. So we'll start with the general fund. In terms of the big four revenue forecast, oh, excuse me, the four largest revenues in the general fund, they've been stable and increasing since 2020 with an uptick in sales tax.
I also wanted to follow up from the council retreat that was held on July 12. There were some questions and comments, so I wanted to make sure and follow up with that information. And I also wanted to start expanding the financial reports beyond the general fund. The city has a complexity of different resources and projects. And so I want to start incorporating other elements into the financial reports. The general fund is a major focus, but there's a lot of other information that I think that you should be made aware of. So that'll be coming in future reports. Okay. Thank you so much. So the presentation will cover results of the general fund. I provided a breakdown of sales tax, BNO tax, and utility taxes, provided some information on REIT, what the revenues are doing there, and some additional information. And then I also wanted to talk a little bit about utility revenues and expenditures. So we'll start with the general fund. In terms of the big four revenue forecast, oh, excuse me. The four largest revenues in the general fund, they've been stable and increasing since 2020 with an uptick in sales tax and BNO tax between 2024 and 2025. And in the next couple of slides, I'm going to go in a little bit more detail. But I wanted to provide a historical perspective so you can see how those revenues have been trending over a period of time. In terms of the forecast, we're expecting property tax to be on track with budget. We set the levy amount each year, and collectability tends to be pretty high. So it's typical that we're close to budget, and we're on track in meeting that expectation. The updated sales tax forecast is showing that we're expecting to come in about 3% over budget, so about on track with budget. And the next slide, we're going to break that down to see what's driving that increase. BNO taxes, they're expected to come in about 18% over budget, so pretty significant. And that's because the variability of the BNO tax, we were very conservative when we built the 2025 budget. So we built the 2025 budget based on 2024 actuals. And you can see on the first slide, we're seeing the uptick in revenue from 2024 to 2025. So it's basically, we were conservative when we built the budget. And so that's why our variance is so high. The utility tax forecast is showing that revenue is expected to come under budget by about 8%. You'll see later in the presentation that's mostly driven by water, sewer, and stormwater. Water activity tends to increase this time of year as the weather months get warmer. So I'm expecting that the forecast, we could start to see some adjustment or more alignment as we get to Q3 and Q4. So breaking, oh, let's see. Now I need to go back. About that. There we go. Breakdown of sales tax received by category. This is something that I believe was requested from the council retreat. And so we did the same historical perspective. It just broke that down a little bit more. And the reason why the revenues are upticking for 2024 and 2025 is really being driven by the retail and construction trade. The other categories are stable, but we're not seeing the growth in those two categories. It's really coming from the retail and the construction. A breakdown of the BNO tax category. This is, again, a historical perspective from 2018 to 2025. The orange line is representing all other businesses. That's primarily the real estate sector. That represents a 20% increase from last year. So most of the revenue growth that we're seeing is from the real estate industry. Retailing is also contributing to that growth, about an increase of 8% from this time last year. And then the remaining categories have been relatively stable since 2018, but we're not seeing a lot of growth in those areas. In terms of the BNO forecast, it's showing right now that we're going to expect to exceed budget by about 1.1 million. Again, that is coming from all other business, from the real estate sector. So that's going to be the biggest driver of us exceeding our budget. And that's really attributed to our home values. And I'll talk about the home values a little bit when we get to the REIT presentation. Our utility tax forecast, we're expected to come in under budget by about 8%. As noted earlier, that's really driven by water, sewer, and stormwater. Those are showing the largest differences. We do expect water revenue with the hot weather months, that will, those will probably uptick by third quarter. So we expect that that'll be closer to budget by the end of the year. And I'll continue to monitor sewer and stormwater. I'm not sure what's driving that underperformance of budget. But we'll continue to monitor that throughout the year. The other item I wanted to point out is cable TV is expected to come in significantly under budget. There's a few factors for that. A lot of people are moving away from the cable TV into streaming services. That is not unique to Isaguas. Other cities are experiencing that decline as well. And the budget, I believe, was significantly increased because we did have a tax rate increase on cable TV that took effect in 2025. So I think we were anticipating an uptick in revenue. We increased the budget by quite a bit. So I think there's two factors here. People are moving to streaming services, and I think our budget was a little bit overly optimistic. So something for us to think about as we start building our next biennial budget. So we'll continue to evaluate that performance throughout this year and 2026 in preparation for our next biennial. These are a list of identified budget amendments that I understand have come before council and have been approved by council. This is not the full exhaustive list of budget amendments, but these are some big ones that we've been tracking. So just a reminder that these will likely come forward when we go through the formal budget amendment process later this fall. I'm working with staff right now on that process and working with departments. I'll be working with departments on identifying what those budget amendments will look like. We're putting together a process and a timeline. I plan to share that with the senior leadership team at an upcoming leadership meeting. And then, of course, council will have an opportunity to review and comment on any budget amendments before those are brought to you formally for action. So that concludes the general fund section. And now I have a couple of slides on the real estate excise tax. So the forecast for the routine REIT transactions are expected to come in about 19% below budget. We did have two large transactions in April and May. So with those large transactions, we'll be on track to meet budget. But overall, our routine transactions will be underperforming under budget. And the next slide, hopefully, will explain a little bit more about what drives the trend on the REIT transactions. So on the left side of your screen, we have the average REIT received per routine transaction. As you can see, that's been trending upward. We've also been seeing that home values in Isaguas has also been trending upward. So that trend makes sense to me that if home values are increasing, then the average amount that we're receiving per transaction should be increasing. On the other side of the screen, what we're seeing is the average number of transactions that are being processed through REIT. That is trending downward. That also makes sense to me because the home, the housing market has slowed down. That's likely because interest rates are higher. Interest rates are starting to come down. So hopefully, we'll start to see an uptick in the number of routine transactions. If we start seeing that, then hopefully, our forecast will start to shift, and that revenue will start to balance towards the budget. So those two things are important for us to look at together because if we saw a situation where home sales or home values were declining and the number of transactions were declining, then overall, our revenue would be declining more than it is now. So those are kind of balancing each other out. Okay, so I'm going to finish up the last pieces of the presentation to talk about utility revenues and expenses. So this first slide is looking at utility revenue as compared to budget. This is through June of 2025. Actual revenues are mostly in line with budget. Stormwater is slightly below budget. That's likely because these total revenues include not only charges for services, but other revenues like grants. If we have grant-related revenue that's related to projects, it could be a timing issue that we haven't issued for, requested for reimbursement on those grants. So that's lagging a little bit behind until we get any grant revenues that we may have applied for. On the next slide is utility expenditures budget to actual. And again, this includes both operating and capital budgets. They are within or less than where we should be at this point. Stormwater is coming under budget. And again, that's likely due to capital projects that tend to be happening during the summer months. And then if those capital projects are tied to the grant revenue, then we'll see our revenues start to get closer to budget as we get through the year. And this last slide is just utility revenue received over a period of time through June. Just wanted to show you that, for the most part, revenues have been trending upward since 2021. We did have a peak in 2021, and the water dipped down a little bit in 2023. We had a large project in 2021 that contributed to connection fees. So you saw an uptick there. But generally speaking, from 2023 through 2025, revenues have been trending upwards. So that is good news. So overall, I think the message is that revenue expenses are generally on track with budget. I don't see any major red flags. And I'll just continue to monitor some of the things that I've been looking for. But overall, I hope it was a positive message. I think we're on track and not any major concerns at this point. For next steps, I just put in there some tentative dates on when you might see me again for future financial information. We also have some public hearings coming up on the biennial budget, the property tax levy. So we'll have an opportunity to have more conversations this fall.
Kristin, thank you. Is that your first time presenting before council?
That is my first time officially presenting.
Congratulations.
So thank you for bearing with me in some of the technical glitches. So I apologize for that, but thank you so much.
Nice to see you in council chambers. Okay, any questions on the presentation? Nope, seeing a lot of satisfied customers. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Deputy Council President?
Yeah, sorry, late to the button. You mentioned that there are a multiplicity of other funds, and you wanted to know if there were those that we would want to get reports on. And I think it's called the IHOP now. It's had several different names, but it's our 1/10th, 1% for affordable housing and homelessness.
Yes.
I'd love to see that as a regular update. It's just, it's just one thing that I'm very interested in. I don't know if anybody else is, but I'd like to see how that's doing at least a quarter.
Would an email answer be appropriate, copied to the city council?
Sure. Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Director.
Okay, thank you.
So this was an informational item, and no council action is requested, direction is requested tonight. The next item of business is ID 1870, informational update, citywide work plan and capital projects, second quarter 2025 update. And I'd like to invite Management Analyst Jillian Straub to present the item. Welcome, Jillian.
Thank you. Give me one sec to get set up here. All right. Thank you all. My name is Jillian Straub. I'm a management analyst here tonight to present the second quarter update on the citywide work plan projects as well as the capital projects that are being worked on in this biennium. I'd be remiss if I didn't note that this, this project touches a lot of staff throughout the city. Dozens of people contribute updates, review them, and ultimately get them to where, where we can present them to you tonight. So that's why we're here today. I'd like to share a little bit of background that the administration typically presents these updates semi-regularly throughout the year. The last one was in March at the city council retreat. At that time, we were forecasting what quarter one work might look like. Here at the beginning of August, you all are receiving an update that most project managers completed in July about the work from April to June, or through the end of June of 2025. And I'll be back in front of you in November to present the work that occurs in Q3. So with that, I'll dive straight into the work plan. So there are actually 28 items on the city's work plan. And these priorities, as you can see, are mostly on track. The reason that we only present 27 is because one of them is to implement the capital improvement plan, which we have a lengthy section of this presentation for. As you can see, most of these items are on track. One item remains facing minor challenges. That's implementing the Economic Development Action Plan, given the staff turnover in that, in that division. I'll call out that no items are facing major challenges and that two items were completed. Before we talk about those two completed items, there are a couple of questions that were sent in by city council members that I'd like to address now. And then we'll talk about these items that were completed in Q2. So first, identifying options for on-demand transit services. The administration had its second quarter meeting with King County Metro. They are willing to continue this service in Isaguas but at a slightly higher rate than we had anticipated and budgeted for. So we're waiting for some performance data from them before the administration makes its recommendation. And then on reviewing cities' property assets and surplusing, there's a detailed email to you all about, about what this looks like in quarter two. But just to summarize that, the city has completed most of its surplusing work that was identified for the biennium. The city tries to do this when lease terms are up. So the next set of buildings that the city owns and might be eligible for surplusing have lease terms that end as soon as 2028. So there's no more surplusing action anticipated in the biennium. There might be some further demolition or work on some items, including some park projects at the Almanac Houses. But that's to be determined yet. And it's in the CIP for a little bit later on. And then there's also a question about how preventative maintenance or maintenance of our facilities factors into this. This is worked into our CIP through various programs that budget form plan out those, those maintenance activities rather than have it be presented as part of this update. But of course, we can provide more information on any of that if needed. In addition, there was a question on business and occupation tax filing. We're working on a, IT and finance is working on a band-aided solution to allow folks to file online and pay online. However, it isn't an integrated solution that, that transfers seamlessly to our finance system. So there's still a lot of behind-the-scenes work needed with this solution. Staff will be looking into an integrated solution to present as part of a future budget process. But the ability to file and pay online will likely be available before the end of the year. Let me see. And with that, I'd like to welcome, welcome up Matt Ellis to talk a little bit about the intelligent transportation system improvements.
Good evening, council. Director Moon is on vacation, so I'm substituting in tonight. The city has a lot of projects right now relating to intelligent signal technology. IT is working on fiber connectivity, and operations is working on dynamic message signing. But on the CIP side, we are in the process of awarding the contract for the adaptive signal control technology project. I'll flow. This is the project commonly referred to as smart signals or adaptive signal technology. And this is a high-level feasibility study. We will be screening seven corridors, which includes about 45 intersections, to see which corridors are applicable for adaptive signals. And this is a two-phase project. Phase one will evaluate and model the city's traffic conditions at these seven corridors to see if any or all are viable candidates for applying the adaptive signal control technology. And then phase two will include detailed traffic simulations, enveloping system costs, and determine the cost-benefit analysis to, of improvements to see which corridors are cost-effective to implement the technology. We have selected a consultant and are working on negotiating the scope and fee for phase one of the project. We will be discussing the evaluation criteria for phase one with TAB next year and present the results of the evaluation with MNI in Q2 of 2026. We are also working with WashDOT to authorize a grant to purchase and install cameras to analyze intersections for vehicles, vehicle near misses so the city can proactively improve safety before accidents occur.
All right, with that, the two, the two projects that were completed in this quarter are the citywide residence survey. These results were presented to city council in May of 2025 with largely favorable ratings for Isaguas a great place to live and issues noted around traffic and land use. The administration also presented a review of the jail operation finances. And at that time, the city council agreed with the recommendation to continue jail operations in the near term with looks, with an examination of how to create some operational savings and safety measures. This is our last work plan slide, so I'd like to pause here and see if there are any questions. Happy to take questions at the end as well.
I am not seeing an indication of questions now, but it doesn't mean they won't have them later, of course.
All right, with that, we can move to the capital projects. There are 75 projects on the list this biennium. As you can see, there are a significant number of projects that moved from on track in quarter one to facing minor challenges in quarter two. And we'll talk a little bit about why that is in a moment. But most projects are still on track. About the same number of projects are facing major challenges. Six projects were completed this quarter, and three projects were started that previously hadn't been. So with that, there are kind of five thematic reasons, I'd say, for, for delay or challenges to these projects. And the first is staffing. So 30% of Public Works project management staff who actively manage these projects were out on some sort of leave throughout quarter two. So that led to delays as those projects were handed to other project managers or put on hold until those managers returned. There are also, there were also some vacancies in kind of specialized or single incumbent positions that can't easily be filled in by other staff in our Public Works and IT departments. So that led to some delays in some of those projects as well. But I also know that there are questions around kind of wider staffing and hiring market trends that I'd like to invite up Stephanie Johnson to, to address.
Good evening, council, Mayor. I just would like to provide some additional context as it relates to staffing citywide, also how as it relates to staffing citywide, also how, you know, impacts the work plan. So, Jillian alluded to a couple of those items as it relates to capital projects and public works. At the council retreat in July, I gave a general overview of staffing. I shared at that time, I'll share again tonight. We run roughly around a 7% turnover rate, very comparable to other jurisdictions. For the most part, citywide, we are receiving a good amount of applications for all of our vacancies. We do experience challenges in certain positions. Those certainly include engineers, IT professionals, also project management staff, and then also our police department. So, you know, we are filling positions at a good rate. When we are facing challenges, I think what we want to address tonight is really the things that we're focusing on to address those challenges. What sets us apart? So, certainly, we are trying to be very more descriptive in our job announcements. I think sometimes in public sector, we get to posting the job description, and so staff have really been working to make our job advertisements attractive. And that means, you know, what is the meaningful work that you get to come and do in the city of Issaquah? And then, where are we casting our nets? And certainly partnering with all the hiring managers and the departments to look at those items. We are tapping more shoulders than we ever have before. We are using resources like LinkedIn to our advantage. We simply send out interest lists to positions in which we are not receiving a good amount of qualified applicants for. That's really yielded some good candidates to us in a couple of different recruitment processes that we've done lately. Certainly, remaining competitive in wages and benefits sets us apart. We've talked in past about our total compensation philosophy, to remain at or above the median of the market. For some positions in which we do struggle to fill right away, there are some that we have offered signing bonuses in the police department, relocation expenses when we can be creative to do those things. We're also just doing more in the way of recognition right up front when people come to Issaquah, posting our excitement for individuals to come. You met, you know, our new economic development and housing manager tonight, Alexis Fitzsimmons, and really making, you know, our new hires a part of the Issaquah family right away. And so, certainly using recognition as a tool is, again, another way not only to attract but retain folks. And then, growth and development. We're always looking at who we can grow within as well, right? And so, did we even need to cast our nets out if we can look within and give a growth and development opportunity to our staff? So, you know, certainly, attraction and retention is something that we're continuously focusing on to help hiring managers. But by and large, we are, you know, filling positions at a good rate. We do look at ways in which we can be creative when we aren't filling those positions right away. We've also looked at just the time it takes from, you know, posting to hire. In some cases, this can be 30, 60, 90 days or more. And so, how can we cut down on that recruitment time? Not to harp on Alexis's recruitment, but she's a great example of, you know, she moved to the area. We took advantage of her really shining in the interview process to move right into a second interview at the conclusion of the first interview. We're doing things very similarly in the police department. So, continuously looking at ways that we can attract and retain, but by and large, we are filling our positions at a good rate. I'll stop there and hand it back over to Jillian unless there's any questions.
Council President?
Thank you. Yeah, I asked this question in email, so I really appreciate taking the time to come out, because I know, you know, we have heard many years of staffing is a constraint and the reason that we can't get things done. So, I would be really interested in understanding new things that we are trying that would be different since we have faced these problems for so many years. And then, also, for some of these particular positions that relate to areas where we have delays or major challenges, how long we should expect those to continue to remain vacant if there are issues of, you know, we haven't seen applications or anything like that. So, I would appreciate an email update if there are particular positions related to the work plan or capital improvement items.
Sure, I'm happy to provide that.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Jillian?
Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, one sec. I got kicked out of the call. All right. So, in addition to staffing, there are also a couple of other reasons for challenges or delays across projects. Unanticipated permitting that's required can delay projects. External management. We have a few projects that are managed by WashDOT consultants or PSC that we report on through this, because they're of importance to the city and are in our NRCIP. Oftentimes, as we move into design and construction, there's an opportunity for sequencing that wasn't evident before. So, sometimes projects can move schedule because of that. And finally, budget or funds can delay or move projects as well. Okay, sorry. Just a little bit of a delay there. Okay, I'll now walk through each of the categories of capital projects. So, most of our transportation projects are on track. Seven are now facing minor challenges. I'll note here that these really span the reasons for delays ranging from staffing to permitting to external management. We also had two projects that were completed in quarter two. So, with the completion of TR 92, the ITS traffic camera upgrade, 13 cameras around the city were upgraded to be part of that intelligent traffic systems, system. And then, TR 086 went to City Council in April. At that time, the Squawk Mountain Non-Motorized Improvement Project Study was presented, and it was agreed upon by council that the actual design and construction of this project wouldn't be possible given the staffing and funding available. So, this is going to be put on hold until the next CIP. So, staff will be continuing to consider what a preferred lower-cost alternative would be for this, but there won't be any more updates on it through this process, because there's no further designer construction we're anticipating in this biennium. If you'd like updates on this, these can be provided ad hoc, or if we need to fold them back in later, we certainly can. Okay. Next, our technology and systems projects. These are split half and half between on-track and major challenges. Our major challenges projects are due to staffing issues, some key vacancies in our IT division. Our parks and trails projects, four projects have been completed, or I'm sorry, four projects are on track, and one project has been completed. Hillside Park opened in May of 2025 to the community. And then, four projects haven't been started. Part of this is sequencing, having one park planner. All right. Our facilities projects are next. Most of these are on track. One project is facing minor challenges. The leasing agreement for, or with, King County courts to move the courts out of this building into their facility has just taken a little bit longer than anticipated, and now those schedules are pushing into the holiday season. So, moving antenna improvements are anticipated in January of '26. Our stormwater projects are next. I'll note that this slide has an error. ST 008, Storm Drainage Rehab and Improvement Program is actually on track. It is not facing minor challenges. And then, some of the projects that are facing minor challenges here are due to state permitting for the Laughing Jacobs Creek Channel Enhancement Support Project. For ST 021, I always found that the stream that this relates to is actually fish bearings, so the project needed to be redesigned, and it pushed out construction. And then, for ST 053, the machine that cleans the pervious pavement was broken, so we had to wait for a new machine to begin work on that. And then, the Fish Culvert Replacement Program was pushed to 2030 in part because of sequencing and budget, and to complete other, like, higher priority stormwater projects with the funds available and be conscious of rate increases. All right. We have two more categories left. One of them is sewers. So, three projects moved to minor challenges, but three are still on track. And these, again, range from permitting delays to more detailed electrical design and staffing issues. For our water projects, we have three that are facing minor challenges, but six that are on track. And these range from a need-to-stagger, oh, sorry, I'm one ahead, a need-to-stagger Water 09. With other projects, for the Highwood Reservoir retrofit, the reservoir painting schedule was delayed by weather. And then, the Motte-Roe Chlorine Analyzer was pushed to 27 in part due to budget. So, then, one project was completed, the West Side Reservoir's retrofit in early July. So, those are all my updates. I'll be before you again in November to talk about what happened July through October for all of these projects. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Jillian, Matt, and Stephanie. Again, just a reminder, before we do questions, it's an informational item, and there is no council direction requested tonight, but let's start with questions, comments. Council President?
Thank you. I know there have been many things related to the intelligent transportation system, and so you talked about some of the cameras being installed there. But I'm wondering if there is, first of all, a larger sense of what our timeline is on that. And then, you had noted in the memo, the Traffic Signal Operations Engineer position is vacant, but a consultant was selected. So, is there a sense of when the next kind of active period of work would be there?
I think we're in part waiting, or, okay. I think, to answer the second part of your question, I think we're in part waiting to have that staff onboard to manage the consultant and really begin the work in earnest with them on the improvements. And then, I'd have to ask other staff as well about the overall timeline for this larger system.
And I've asked Stephanie to come up and talk a little bit more specifically about the public works positions, because a number of them are all directly related to this. So, Stephanie, maybe you could talk about where we stand?
Sure.
What were the circumstances in general terms for the vacancies? Because there's three or four positions that are very, all tied into this, as well as the leaves that we have experienced as well.
Correct. So, the Traffic Signal Operations Engineer is currently an active recruitment. It is in a finalist stage. We have had a couple of candidates through the process that have made different decisions along the way. So, I know Director Moon is out right now, but is planning to do a finalist interview with a candidate that could be coming to fruition very soon. Today, capital projects manager position, there was interviews actually for that particular position. So, that's well-headed on its way for completion as well, or to bring a staffer on. You know, Jillian mentioned leaves versus vacancies, right? And so, we have had a number of staff, I will tell you, even just something like tracking for 16 babies citywide right now. We have had a number of people on leave. And so, whether it be for paternity, or maternity, or their own health issues, there was a couple of positions in which we didn't backfill those positions. We have to save those positions. But two individuals happen to have babies at the same time that are now back and acclimating into the workforce as of the month of July. And so...
And these were two public works engineers who each had babies.
That's correct. So, therein lies for project manager engineer positions within public works that directly impacts this work plan.
Stephanie, just for some context, I mean, I get to sit in the building. I'm part of watching the baby boom that's happening, but in your time with the city, we have, the staff demographics have changed. Is this an unusually high number of individuals on leave?
That's a really great question. You know, it really is, I think, I'm thinking, you know, COVID babies. We saw some babies coming out of COVID for sure. And then, you know, ever since then, the uptick has certainly occurred. You know, life is happening for people all over the place. And so, while I'm talking about babies, there are just other staff that are either taking care of themselves, or an aging parent, or others that don't necessarily contribute to the baby dynamic, but they have a right to, you know, protected leave for other family issues. So, yes, there's been an uptick in babies, but I would also say that the staffing dynamic in the world at large is that more people are exercising their rights under FMLA and PFML. I'll speak to that without going down a rabbit hole, that the, you know, the federal leave, the FMLA, and then the state leave, PFML, those leaves now can compound, and so one can be out for much longer than they ever were able to be out before as well. And so, that, you know, is definitely an impact in the big picture as it relates to staffing for any type of leave when it's protected medically as well.
Questions? Council President, let me just check. Is there any other questions? Otherwise, I'm going back to Council President.
Thank you. And this one is not for you, Stephanie, but just generally, one of the things that I didn't notice on the citywide work plan was any update on the BNO, the Business and Occupation Tax. As everyone knows, the utility taxes are now, or the utility payments are now online, and our businesses have been waiting and waiting and waiting and waiting, and very eager to get that tax or that payment online. So, I was wondering if, I know I got an email on it, but if there could be just an update on that timeline. And I know I got that from Autumn, so maybe Wally?
And Jillian covered it. So, Jillian, could you say that again?
Yeah.
It was in your presentation earlier.
Yeah. So, we're working on a solution to allow for payment and filing by the end of the year, so people will be able to pay on our system. The real, true integrated solution will be part of a future budget process, where not only is that payment received by, or can be paid online, but we can actually receive and record it in our financial systems without a ton of manual work. So, that'll be coming in the future, but the ability to actually pay online will be completed by the end of the year.
Any other additional questions? Thank you all for coming and answering. There's always a lot of staff required when we're doing the work plan. We are going to move on to AB 9046, which is the interlocal agreement with Lake Sammamish State Parks for sports field use. The ask before council this evening is to authorize it, and I'd like to invite Parks and Community Services Director Jeff Wallen to present the item. Welcome, Jeff.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Here tonight to present this opportunity to preserve and, quite frankly, broaden community access to the fields at Lake Sammamish State Park. Thank you, Deputy Clerk Mueller, for running the presentation. I've been having laptop issues as of late. Excellent. Thank you so much. Next slide. So, yeah, the purpose tonight, as I stated earlier, to seek your authorization to enter into this agreement with state parks regarding management of the sports fields at Lake Sammamish State Park. Next slide. A little bit of history here to give some context, some key dates. As we go all the way back to 2009, there was an agreement initiated between the... There was an agreement initiated between the Issaquah Soccer Club and Washington State Parks for the soccer club to manage and maintain those soccer fields that we see across from IHOP, AKA known as the IHOP Fields, as well as some fields across from Costco. And that agreement in 2009 was really, and subsequent to beginning of this year, allowed for the sole use of soccer on those fields. In 2022, so a couple of years back, as we were fresh off of our first park strategic plan, we began looking more diligently and intently at athletic field use and looking at a study identifying the reality, the land constraint nature of Issaquah, that we really prioritize the need for looking at multi-use fields throughout the city rather than thinking that we could build a bunch of single-use fields throughout town. And also called for really urgent opportunity to seek partnerships and understand that not only us, us, the city, are purveyors, managers of athletic fields, but so is the school district, and so is Lake Sammamish State Park. So it really set into motion some more earnest conversations with both the school district and State Parks. In 2024, we brought before you the updated park system plan. That dialed in even a little bit more and identified the need for really focusing on taking care of what we got, improving our existing fields, looking at ways that we could maybe be a partner in improving other public fields to accommodate current and future athletic field needs for the community. Again, recognizing, looking at the alternative, and the alternative would be building a bunch of new athletic fields. And I think we're all aware of our topography in town, but finding flat, accessible, developable land is a very, very expensive acquisition endeavor. So really calling to prioritize improving and sustaining these existing fields. Fast forward another year to earlier this year, in March, late March, we were notified by State Parks that the Issaquah School, or Issaquah School, Issaquah Soccer Club, lot of ISs, the Issaquah Soccer Club had terminated its maintenance and management agreement with State Parks. State Parks then inquired, as to our interest as a city, would that be something we would consider taking over that maintenance and management? Fast forward, Cassidy. Thank you. After doing in April some initial due diligence, beginning to study and evaluate that, talking with mayor and city administrator, working with our park operations team to even see what's doable and how we might set a course of action that creates a break even model, whereas we would set a level of service for those fields that could be afforded with the revenues that we would collect from those fields. Doing some initial framing with State Parks and recognizing it was really the benefit for both us as a city and them as State Parks to consider a shorter term pilot agreement, so looking at and setting a framework for an 18-month agreement. We brought those ideas, those concepts to both the park board on May 19th, and then the next night after unanimous recommendation from the park board to consider to pursue this partnership, we then went to Services Safety and Parks Committee on May 20th, had a great conversation with the committee members there to receive unanimous support to proceed with drafting this agreement and bringing it back to you all, the full council, later this summer. And here we are, later in the summer. So a context map, the proposed field area that is within this agreement is just a portion of the fields that were managed by Issaquah Soccer Club. We felt that was important for two reasons. One is we needed to be realistic with the maintenance responsibilities we could take on and feel comfortable with. And secondly, and really as important, State Parks remains concerned about the footprint of sports fields on the state park and is there, within the state park, and is there updating their management plan, realizing the natural areas within the state park, the core mission of State Parks in sustaining those natural resources. We consider and propose moving forward with a slightly smaller footprint that recognizes both of those realities. What you're seeing here is the field area across from, or alongside Northwest Sammamish Road, AKA known as the IHOP Fields, as I mentioned earlier. This configuration will allow us, as we've worked also with community groups and solicited their interest, this configuration will allow for two cricket pitches that we would like to go in and create, so two cricket fields would overlay multiple configurations of rectangular fields for both soccer and lacrosse. So as I said earlier about broadening the community access, we feel like this is an important endeavor as well with this pilot program, is that this, for the first time, would be making these fields available for multiple sports and not just soccer. So lots of interest again from cricket groups, as well as soccer and lacrosse groups. Also noted, you won't see in the blue, but right next to it is the parking lot. This is a separate parking lot that supports these fields. That parking area would continue to be the priority maintenance responsibility of State Parks. You'll see in the agreement that we have offered secondary support to make sure that that parking area is in good working condition. We continue to work with State Parks on, ideally sometime this fall, doing some maintenance improvements to that parking lot to make sure if anyone is driven in there throughout the years of soccer, no, can get pretty rutted. Next slide. So the proposal, yes, rutted. The proposal for you, as I mentioned, the city of Issaquah is proposing to assume the maintenance and management, otherwise known as scheduling, of this portion that was identified in the map of the fields at Lake Sammamish State Park. We'd manage this space for multi-use, and again, really have received positive feedback from those other sports groups, that this will help to meet their needs that they've had, and they have, and have never really had access to these, to these public spaces before. Next slide. So the proposal is to enter into this short-term agreement, again, an 18-month agreement that would run through December 2026, actually November of 2026. We wouldn't be scheduling the fields in December due to winter conditions anyways. This proposal, this pilot proposal allows us to do just that, to pilot this service. Over this one-year period, we'll better understand community demand, we'll better understand our operational and our budgetary impacts, both in terms of revenues and expenditures. This same timeframe then also allows State Parks to finalize the update to their management plan, that they are initiating an update for, and then allows both of us as agencies to determine if a long-term agreement is supported, then we can step into that together in 2027 and beyond. As I mentioned in the Agenda Bill report, this coincides well with our budget, by no budget process as well as in that, come the 2027, 2028 budget, if we were to proceed with this, we would walk into that longer-term agreement and that budget process much better informed. Next slide. So the recommendation is to authorize the mayor to enter into this agreement with Washington State Parks for us to maintain and manage a portion of the sports fields in a form that's acceptable to the mayor and the city attorney. Any questions for me?
Jeff, I think before we go to questions, I am going to invite Councilmember Marts, who's Chair of Services Safety and Parks Committee, to summarize the committee's recommendation on this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This proposed partnership was discussed at the May 20 Services Safety and Parks Committee meeting. Following the staff presentation and public comment from a couple of interested cricket groups that would use the fields, the committee members deliberated and unanimously recommended that the city move forward with finalizing an agreement with State Parks. The committee asked that once the agreement was finalized, that it go directly to the full council for approval, so help to ensure that rentals and field use by the community could begin in late August. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Marts. Are there any council questions? Councilmember Jiang, Council President?
I have two questions. So first, I'm curious, how many soccer, lacrosse, and cricket fields would there be? And, you know, I understand that they would be overlapping, but how, what's the maximum amount for each sport?
So for cricket, it would be two full-size cricket pitches. Those are the largest configurations. So if you think of a full-size cricket pitch, basically takes up two soccer fields. So two cricket pitches, smaller number of cricket pitches for youth ages. Soccer fields, full-size soccer fields would be four. Four full-size lacrosse fields as well, those would be the same configuration. All of you that know soccer, there's a wide variety of mod-sized fields, it could be anywhere to a dozen mod-sized fields.
Cool, thank you. My other question's not, it's a little bit tangential to this, but you mentioned earlier, you know, as part of the park strategic plan, you identified that, for example, like the school district also has fields that aren't necessarily open to broader communities. So I'm curious if there's any, you know, conversations with them on similar types of agreements?
Yes, absolutely. There has been through the years. I know a number of your council members attended the joint meeting we had a year and a half ago. We continue to explore ideas with the school district. We're also in the midst of updating our joint use agreement that should be coming to you later this fall or early in 2026.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council President?
Thank you. So I know there are two other kind of field areas within the state park area. There's the softball fields, and then there's also the rather muddy area of soccer fields across from Costco. Are those still going to be in use, managed by the state park? Are they going away? What is our approach in any of those areas?
Great question. So the baseball softball fields that you see closest to I-90, those were never part of the Issaquah Soccer Club management agreement, so that wasn't in consideration for this? That would still be managed by State Parks, will still be managed by State Parks, absolutely. I'm not sure what State Parks is planning for the field area across from Costco. I know it's currently being used as MOB site and as a construction site for the really, really important Issaquah Creek project. I do know historically that has been the toughest area and was the toughest area for Issaquah Soccer Club to maintain and manage, so I think there is a number of hydrological issues that, as we did our due diligence, we didn't feel the need to try and pursue that area.
Just to add to that, Mountain Sisson Greenway, who is working on that project, believes that the area is going to be naturalized, which it probably should have always been. So it will become a wetland buffer and an enhanced wetland by the time they finish with storing stuff. And Councilmember Hall?
Well, thank you, very exciting. I grew up playing soccer at the IHOP Fields, which was then ISC Arsenal at that time, so this issue is fun that I get to be a part of this. So anyways, very cool. My question is, so we're thinking about this as kind of a pilot program, so I'm just curious, when it's all wrapped up, we've gone through the pilot phase, what are we looking for in terms of, that was really successful, we'd like to keep doing this, or maybe steering away and saying, okay, that was a good learning experience, but maybe we don't want to be doing this long-term? What are the kinds of things that we're going to be looking for?
Yeah, great question. I think it's multifold. I think, one, evaluating what is community use? What's that been looking like? What is the mix? Are we seeing a healthy mix of sports? We'll learn from an operations and maintenance standpoint what that means and what that looks Equally, State Parks has their management plan, you know, they're the owner of this still, so, you know, very respectfully, they have a decision to make whether they will want to enter into this agreement with us long-term. So I think we'll become much more informed, again, of community use and our own maintenance capabilities. State Parks will become that much more informed. I've said earlier to a number of you, this is an opportunity for us to build relationship and trust with State Parks as well as a public agency. So I think that'll be another define or an outcome to determine success if we're entering into a long-term agreement.
Go ahead, and then we'll go to Councilmember Joe.
So just a quick follow-up. So I think what I'm hearing too is even if State Parks decides this is not in their long-term plan to have soccer fields in this space, we will have a lot of beneficial experience in terms of maintenance, in terms of understanding really what community interest is, to drive future council and administration conversations around, okay, what can we do elsewhere in town to meet this need? And recognizing that we actually can do some of the things that we want to do. Is that what I'm hearing? Even if they decide to...
Yeah, if that's a scenario, absolutely, we're that much more informed.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. Just had a question, if you could just highlight again the revenue so that people listening in will understand that we're not buying the fields, we're not putting out a lot of capital to do this. We anticipate that setting a revenue amount will cover the cost based on some of the work that you've done, if you could highlight the work behind that a little bit.
Yes, thanks, Councilmember Joe, absolutely. So our field fees are set for grass fields. We anticipate, and have built an operating model, if we bring in anywhere from $50,000 to $80,000, we are going to operate within that number. So you're right, the agreement, the joint use agreement that's before you, or I should say the interlocal agreement before you, is we're not paying any rent to State Parks, so there's not a cost to us. We then, and I think State Parks recognizes as another public agency, we're not trying to make a profit here, we're really trying to encourage community access what State Parks appreciates. So no fees to State Parks, all revenues will go to our direct expense, again, in that $50,000 to $80,000 range is what we anticipate.
Great, thank you. Now, thinking a little bit outside the box, I know that our Concerts on the Green are to capacity, and we have people all the way down to different places near City Hall almost on some nights. I don't need a yes or no answer now, but has there been any thought about perhaps opening that area to an event like Concerts on the Green where we could have a larger capacity crowd? Or if we're doing World Cup celebrations or watch parties, set up a tent there and have a soccer celebration on a soccer field would be an idea? But has there been any conversation about perhaps opening it up? Maybe that's a second part conversation after we get past the initial agreement.
Secondary, I can tell you Concerts on the Green, yes, the concerts team, we have talked a lot, realizing this summer, pretty steadily, attendance is beyond Harvey, Harvey Manning statue, that is, right? It's stretching onto the other side of Bush. And I was just speaking last week with David Harris, saying, hey, remember that? We might need to start considering an alternative venue, and whether that's one of our other parks downtown, a lot of things to factor into that. One is parking. You know, when we're having upwards of 1,000-plus people attend, we really need to think about how a park space that could support that degree of flow. But love the idea, we've certainly talked with the state park about, just like any of our public fields, yes, it's a sports field primarily, but it would be available for drop-in, which it never was before, and could also be available should there be a community event that we need or want a space to that side. So yes, World Cup 26, here it comes.
Yeah, thank you very much for that comment, appreciate it.
Any other additional comments or questions? Councilmember Marts, would you like to make motion?
I would, thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Washington State Parks to maintain and manage a portion of the sports fields within Lake Sammamish State Park in a form acceptable to the mayor and city attorney.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any additional council discussion? Councilmember Marts, and then Council President?
I just want to say that the subject of cricket pitches has been lurking, not lurking isn't the right word, it's been, every so often it has been bubbling up for the entirety of the 16 years that I have been on the Issaquah City Council. And if we do this, and if we have opportunities to run cricket pitches sometimes, it is going to really gladden my heart to do something that has perennially been of somewhat passionate interest to some of the South Asian folks in our community. We have a larger and larger South Asian population, and those folks have, we really oftentimes only see them on this topic. only see them on this topic. So although, of course, they have many of the same passions as everybody else, so in addition to providing a service that matters to our community, I hope that this is a small but tangible outreach and engagement to our South Asian community. So for a number of reasons, I'm really excited about this this evening. Thank you.
Council President?
Thank you. Yeah, adding to that, I just want to also say I appreciate the sensitive nature of creating a relationship like this. We are a very environmental community, and so not trying to keep going an area that is, should be more naturalized, is fantastic, and I think that approaches all of our values. And then this really creates an opportunity to provide things in a revenue-neutral way to our community and work with other agencies. So just wanted to say my appreciation.
Other council members? I'll reread the motion. The motion has been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Washington State Parks to maintain and manage a portion of the sports fields within Lake Smamish State Park in a form acceptable to the mayor and city attorney. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously, 7-0. Director Watling, I just need to add on, keep on a little bit of praise. It is because of your constant contact in all these different partner agencies that we have that even an opportunity like this could be realized and acted upon. So thank you for, you know, developing such strong relationships that this is now something that we may see come under Isaguas management. I'm very, very glad about that.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you so much to you and your team. Okay, the next item on our business this evening is AB 90454, naming of East Sunset Way Trailhead to Bill Ramos Trailhead. This item was requested by the city council at the July 21 city council meeting. Staff prepared a resolution for the city council's consideration that would name the East Sunset Way Trailhead to the Bill Ramos Trailhead. There is not a staff presentation on this item this evening. Does council have any questions before they move to a motion? Would someone like to make a motion? Council President?
I move to approve Resolution Number 2025-16.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Naming the East Sunset Way Trailhead for the late Bill Ramos.
I very happily second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, the resolution has been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 202516, naming the East Sunset Way Trailhead for the late Bill Ramos. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously, 7-0. And the next item of our business this evening is committee and regional reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Jiang.
Great, thank you, Mayor Pauli. So I have one report from the K-4C Elected Outreach Committee. So this is a smaller group than the main King County Cities Climate Collaborative Group, which I got invited to after meeting one of the King County Executive Climate Office staff people at this working group with Washington State Green Bank. So briefly, on the Green Bank thing, they're a new entity, it's a nonprofit entity funded with some amount of capitalization from the state's Climate Commitment Act funding. And so basically, their whole mission is to provide low-cost financing for a variety of emissions-reducing projects. So it's, you know, just, one of the things that we've seen with a lot of our sustainability projects is we're very reliant on grants, and every other community is reliant on grants. And, you know, seeing if there's ways that we could mix the grants with low-cost financing from a variety of different sources could help our taxpayer dollars go farther. So it was great, there were like 90 people there, including people that came all the way from eastern Washington to talk about projects that help farmers reduce their emissions, which they use a lot of diesel out there. And so, you know, super cool, and so excited to see how that goes. But anyway, back to the K-4C Elected Outreach Committee. So this meeting was, I think, just a couple weeks ago, and they presented the county's strategic climate action plan. And we also discussed how K-4C could, you know, similar to some of the other groups like the Public Issues Committee with Sound Cities Association, how we could use our collective voices for advocacy for policies at the state level as well as with the utilities to help cities reach our climate goals. In particular, you know, one of the biggest concerns from every city is like, how are we going to have enough power for all the EVs that people are going to buy? And so making sure that, you know, our elected officials know that this is a concern for everyone and figuring out how we can move forward with that. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. And I know everybody knows, but Councilmember Jiang just celebrated her wedding a couple weeks ago. So congratulations from all of us to you.
Thank you. Councilmember Joe?
Madam Mayor, thank you. The Chamber of Commerce will be holding their board meeting this Friday, 8:30 in the morning, and Council, excuse me, City Administrator Wally Bobkowitz will be going to that meeting. I will be out of town. The Cascade Water Alliance Board Meeting in August is canceled. The Cascade Water Alliance Public Affairs Committee will meet on September 3. There is no LTAC Committee Meeting scheduled for August, but there will be one in September. And just on another note, I had an opportunity to meet Ethan Newberry at the Isaguas Film Festival. And the only reason I mention Ethan Newberry is he runs a run called the Tiger Claw Trail Run, and we sponsor it using LTAC dollars. And this run's kind of interesting because it's a shoulder-season run. We have that high season in the summer, and then we want to have these other events on the other portions of the year so that we can continue to fund LTAC and broaden out the events that we have in our city. So it's great to meet Ethan. The other connection that Ethan had to the film festival was that he directed, one of the films there, there were 38 films, and he directed a film called The High Route, which highlights an incredible run over six days from Marble Mount to Lake Shalane, basically. And just incredible run by a local athlete and another local athlete from a nearby city. It was great to see that film highlighted in the film festival, and thank you to the Isaguas Arts Commission, Rachel Wright and her group, as well as the Isaguas School District for opening up their facility along with theater for this public event. And finally, thanks to the City of Isaguas for sponsoring the event and for all the work that Amy Duke did to put this together. She's not one that trumpets her own achievements, but this would not have been possible without her dedication and hard work. So I just wanted to pass it on to city leadership and to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Councilmember Hall?
Oh, I wanted to also note Ethan Newberry won an Emmy Award for that film that Councilmember Joe mentioned.
Yes, he did. Very proud. No report from Councilmember Hall. Councilmember Ray?
No reports this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Mertz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee, per its longstanding policy, has no August meeting. Services Safety and Parks Committee of the city council, however, never rests. And so we will be having a special, 6:30 PM Thursday, August 26, committee meeting, while many of you are resting on your laurels. We will be having a revised conversation about transit-oriented development, opportunity center options going forward. This concludes my report.
Thanks. Deputy Counsel, President Di Michele?
Thank you. So the Regional Transit Committee meeting this month is canceled. However, being headed up by Mayor Howell in Smamish and Councilmember Black in Kirkland, we are gathering people from about 12 cities together, writing a letter on behalf of the East Side regarding World Cup transportation planning. And so that letter, when it comes on a draft form, is going to be reviewed by Mayor Pauli, myself, and Thomas Beldris, who's our transportation planner, and we'll let you know how that goes. But there have been meetings on that that I've been attending. Board of Health is also canceled for this month, but Chair Mosqueda is holding meetings on two different initiatives, and I will be attending one of those. And then finally, East Side Human Services Forum, their regular meeting is being moved a week later, but they will be meeting on August 21 for a board meeting. So that is my report.
Councilmember Di Michele, do you also want to touch on the human services convening, or did it happen at the last meeting? I can't remember.
Absolutely. No, I don't think we have reported. And then you can add if I forget something.
You won't forget anything.
So we convened, I think there were 16 different human services agencies that were represented, and we had a convening. This is the third one in the series where really it's a listening session. We do a round robin, and everyone has time to tell us where they're at in relation to federal, state, county, local funding efforts. And there's a lot of volatility, a lot of uncertainty in that community right now. And we've been gathering that input, and the mayor Pauli has very kindly been pushing that and advocating for our local nonprofits by sharing that with our Congresswoman Schreier and other state leaders and county leaders, so that people have an idea of what is happening on the ground with our nonprofit organizations. The meetings, I think, have been very, very informative. It's been great to create this network of nonprofits in the Isaguas area who serve the Isaguas area and to hear what is happening with them. So I think it's been, I've been very impressed with what we've learned.
Yeah, it's traumatic to sit there and listen, also with foundation giving and private donations also being down or being pulled back. It's quite a grim story.
Yeah. And we plan to do another one in September, so we'll be working on that.
Thanks. Council President?
No report this evening.
Thank you. August does tend to be a quieter month. So for the mayor's report, there will be an executive session this evening to discuss pending or potential litigation per RCW 42.30.110 per N1 per NI. It is expected to take 15 minutes. I did want to talk a little bit about Isaguas Sister Cities Commission, which was recognized by the Sister Cities International for innovation in humanitarian assistance. The Sister City Commission was recognized by SCI Organization for Innovation in Humanitarian Assistance for cities with populations between 25,000 and 100,000. This global award acknowledges the work of the commission and community in providing immediate and long-term relief to our sister city of Chawar, Morocco, after earthquakes devastated the region in 2023. I'm particularly proud that the community came together to raise more than $65,000 and provide more than 60 boxes of local donations. The people of Isaguas demonstrated empathy and caring from thousands of miles away, deepening the strong connection between our two communities. The city council's consent agenda tonight included the approval of a lease agreement with King County for the municipal court space. Moving our municipal court from this building at City Hall South to King County's District Courts facility on 220th Avenue will provide numerous safety, functional, and operational improvements for our court at a very reasonable cost, including a dedicated courtroom, holding self-foot cameras, full-time security provided by King County Sheriff's Office, private attorney-client meeting areas, private jury deliberation room and staff meeting area. It is ADA accessible. It will have a reduction in confusion over court locations since we currently have two different ones in town, and space for clerks and probation staff. The five-year lease will cost about $200,000 a year, and expanded internet service for the site will be about $30,000 a year. Operational funding for this lease is included in the adopted 25-26 budget, as well as the one-time relocation costs. Municipal court services are expected to begin at the new location in January of 2026. And as summer is winding down, the Concerts on the Green series will host its final two concerts on August 12 and 19. Tomorrow's concert features classic hits through the ages, followed by a Taylor Swift tribute band next week for the final evening. Sure to be a popular event. Come on down to the community center lawn and enjoy these summer evenings while you can. And lastly, the Confluence Music Festival is back for its seventh year on Saturday, August 31. Check out the arts festival and listen to music from local and internationally renowned musicians. The festival runs from 2:00 to 7:00 PM at Confluence Park and is a free event for the community. Moving to good of the order, are there any items? Council President?
Thank you. I just wanted to highlight that many of you who serve on Sound Cities Association committees may have received an email from staff just inquiring about whether or not you are interested to, or planning to reapply for your seats in the next year. So I wanted to make sure to highlight that, since we are off for the rest of August, and they would appreciate a reply. But I would also appreciate any knowledge on that. If anybody is not planning to reapply for their seats, it would be really helpful to have council leadership know about that, because as you know, we usually do seat applications kind of in that October time period. So we would love to be able to plan and coordinate if we are going to end up having a strategic seat open, to see if there are any other members of council that would be interested in taking up those positions. So just ask for a little bit of coordination as we're in this August time period. Thanks.
And Council President, it's both whether you're reapplying or whether you're not applying. Yes, okay, that's great. There is not a second city council meeting in August. Oh, Councilmember Joe, I'll go to you before I go to meetings.
Oh, thank you. Just wanted to recognize the 25th anniversary or birthday of our Farmers Market. It was a fun event. They had cake and wore hats and had those loud whistles. 30th anniversary, thank you. I'm getting older. 30th? 35th? Okay, 35th. Do I hear 40? 45? 35th, okay. 35th anniversary. I just knew there was cake and sugar. Just a word that we've all seen that market grow, we've all seen the different new vendors that are coming in. One of them was highlighted tonight with our economic development presentation. Just the staff there is so attentive, so reactive to any type of need that the vendors have. I've just been impressed with the whole entire operation. I think that we all should make sure that we get over there and take advantage of the great things that are there. So kudos to the Farmers Market. Thank you.
Talk about the council date?
Yeah.
That's what I was going to say, is, and council is scheduled to be at the last Farmers Market. So you should have a hold on your calendar. We want to make sure that there is an opportunity for us to visit, and we will, council leadership will be coordinating with folks just to do a double check-in on that date and possibly do, you know, morning versus afternoon time periods. But we would love to hear from you, and we'll reach out as well.
Councilmember Jiang?
On the topic of the Farmers Market, also, it's very exciting to see using the Pickering Barn as a roller skating rink. Has a perfect surface for it, and it's really fun. And honestly, I don't think a lot of people know about it yet, but it's a great space. I actually know the people who run it because I grew up roller skating, and like, they were instructors at the skate school. Also, instructor, had my first job as a teenager, teaching roller skating summer camp. So it's very near and dear to my heart, so it's very exciting to me that we have that as a community resource now.
That's hilarious. Yeah, it is pretty fun, I gotta admit. Deputy Counsel President?
Okay, as long as we're all chipping in, I also wanted to talk about the Isaguas Film Festival. I just thought it was a major, major achievement. And they had a wonderful reception Friday night that really kicked things off. It looked like well over 100 people attended that. A lot of them were the filmmakers, but it was a great community event. And I also wanted to just highlight the films that I saw, it was such a nice array of Pacific Northwest-focused, but also focused on indigenous populations and really talking about the history. And then we had Mossback is his name, New Berger was able to come, so we had support from the PBS Channel, Cascade PBS. So really, you know, it was really an amazing achievement. And again, Amy Duke did just a fantastic job, and Rachel Wright, we need to give also appreciation to.
Isaguas Arts.
Yes, it was just fantastic. So I think it, all those kudos, Jeff, you can take those back.
Yes. And the three students from the Isaguas School District who are still running it and started it three years ago. It's an amazing story. Any other good of the order? Okay, I'll do meetings. There is not a second city council meeting in August. The next time we'll be meeting is Tuesday, September 2. The anticipated agenda items at this point are the transit-oriented development or opportunity center options. Next item is executive session. There is an executive session tonight to discuss pending potential litigation per RCW 42.30.110 per N1 per NI. The item is expected to take 15 potential litigation per RCW 42.30.110 per N1 per NI. The item is expected to take 15 minutes. Action is anticipated following an open session, and so we will be going into executive session at 8:50. And if you would like to take a five-minute break, go ahead. We are back in open session at 9:14. And there will be no action this evening. So there being no further business, the meeting is adjourned at 9:14. Thank you.